Commissioner Hodges, please lead us in the invocation and pledge to our flag.
Our Heavenly Father repays you for giving us this opportunity to meet together this evening to discuss and decide matters of common interest and concerns. We acknowledge that self-government is a privilege and that not all people in this world enjoy. Help us to use this power and privilege wisely and in a way that will preserve and enhance this gift for the generations that follow us. This we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberatory, just as for all.
Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein.
Next, we have approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as stated.
I'll second the motion.
Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein.
We have no proclamations this evening. Next, we have a presentation. The presentation is for the certificate of completion to be ordered to Vice Mayor Weinstein for completion of the 2018 Institute for Elected Municipal Officials.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the Board. If I can have the Vice Mayor join me in front so I can present her with the certificate. This is a certificate of completion from the Institute for Elected Municipal Officials for the time of October 5th through the 7th in Tampa, Florida to Vice Mayor Ms. Debbie Weinstein for the City of Madeira Beach. For those of you that are not aware of the program, the Florida League of Cities, working with the Institute for Elected Municipal Officials, has a program that they encourage freshman commissioners and longstanding commissioners, if you haven't gone through the process, to go through an 18-hour grueling curriculum to understand the nuances of municipal government and how the Board as policymakers works with administration and works with the community. So it really gives you a very broad perspective but provides the knowledge base necessary to assist elected officials on making that transition. And I do believe this marks the last one of our Board members that has received this certificate, so it's a testament to all the Board members' commitment to going through this program, to see the value in continuing education. So at this time, we want to recognize the Vice Mayor for her contributions to professional development and congratulations on your certificate.
I believe the next item I skipped over is the announcement of the official final results of the November 6th general election, the City of Madeira Beach charter amendments.
First, I'll read each charter amendment and then I'll read the final official results. Charter Amendment Number 1 is grammar and gender neutrality. This charter amendment would amend the charter throughout numerous sections of the charter to reflect gender neutrality, correct and streamline grammar, incorrect typographical errors, reorganize and renumber the section and articles contained in the charter should the charter be amended. The charter amendment was passed. There were 1,331 votes yes for approval, 771 votes no for rejection. Charter Amendment Number 2, supermajority vote for planned development and special area plans. This charter amendment would require a supermajority vote of four members of the Board of Commissioners for approval of any planned development rezoning or special area plan should the charter be amended. The charter amendment number 2 was approved. It was 1,332 votes for approval, 772 votes no for rejection. Charter Amendment Number 3, appointing Pinellas County Campanicing Board. This charter amendment would amend the charter to appoint the Pinellas County Campanicing Board to serve as a designated campanicing board for all elections under this charter should the charter be amended. Charter Amendment Number 3.
It's not in mine either.
Well, they skipped it, but I do know it passed.
I think it was an eight-by-14 sheet of paper and they probably got copied on eight-and-a-half by 11 is what happened.
Could now be, okay, but that one did pass. Charter Amendment Number 4, nepotism definition of relative. This charter amendment would adopt Florida Statute 112.312 definition of a prohibited relative prohibiting employing and contracting a defined relative, a city commissioner, city manager, city clerk, or city treasurer should the charter amendment be amended. That charter amendment did pass. Charter Amendment Number 5, city manager powers, duties, qualifications, residency, removal procedures, and acting city manager. This charter amendment would require the city manager maintain membership and good standing in the International City/County Management Association, ICMA, and Florida City and County Managers Association, FCCMA, clarify powers and duties of city manager, procedures for removal of city managers, and appointment of acting city manager, and state that while it may be preferable the city manager live within the City of Madeira Beach, it is not mandatory should the charter amendment be amended. Charter Amendment Number 5 did pass. It was 1,298 votes for approval, 897 votes no for rejection. Charter Amendment Number 6, city clerk qualifications. This charter amendment would require the city clerk to maintain certification with the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, IIIMC, and Florida Association of City Clerks, FACCC, should the charter be amended. Charter Amendment Number 6 was passed. 1,443 votes yes for approval, 740 votes no for rejection. Charter Amendment Number 7, city attorney limitations and legal representation of elected officials. This charter amendment would prohibit the city attorney or city attorney's law firm from personally representing an elected official in any recall litigation or Florida Commission on Ethics proceeding. However, the elected official is entitled to legal representation in any recall litigation or Florida Commission on Ethics proceeding at the expense of the city should the charter be amended. Charter Amendment Number 7 was passed. 1,404 votes yes for approval, 770 votes no for rejection. Charter Amendment Number 8, city taxes. This charter amendment would provide that the city shall have the right to levy taxes by ordinance in any manner not in conflict with the general law of the state of Florida and would delete specific references to a public service tax should the charter amendment be amended. Charter Amendment Number 8 did not pass. It was 1,285 votes no for rejection, 857 votes yes for approval. Charter Amendment Number 9, delete references to publicity expenditures. This charter amendment would delete references to and limitations on the use of ad valorem taxes for the purpose of giving publicity to the advantages, facilities, and resources of a city should the charter be amended. Charter Amendment Number 9 did not pass. 1,254 votes no for rejection, 854 votes yes for approval. Charter Amendment Number 10, five-year capital improvement plan. This charter amendment would require adoption of a longer five-year capital improvements program each year instead of the current requirement of a two-year capital improvements program should the charter be amended. Charter Amendment Number 10 did pass. 1,335 votes yes for approval, 793 votes no for rejection. That concludes the rigging of the results.
Thank you. Next, we'll go back to presentations and we've got the Treasure Island and Madeira Beach Chamber of Commerce are donating the golf tournament funds to the City of Madeira Beach. Ms. Hahn, I don't believe is here, so we will go on to the next item. Next item is public comment. The floor is now open. Please remember to state your name and address, be clearly into the microphone, and be civil and respectful. Does anyone wish to speak? Public comment is now closed. Next, we have the consent agenda, approval of the minutes, approval of expenditure for street pole holiday decorations, which went up today, by the way, and they look great, and the Ford-Pinellas inter-local agreement for planning and mapping services and/or special project work in the City of Madeira Beach. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to go forward with all three of those items, to approve them. I read them and they all appear to warrant.
I'll second, but normally I don't like to spend money on consent agenda, but this is for the holiday lighting and it's pretty cut and dry, so I second.
Any discussion? The floor is now open for public comment on this item. Floor is now closed. Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges.
Yes.
Mayor Blank.
Yes.
Our next item is ordinance 2018-14, amendment to the signed ordinance, first reading, Director Portath.
Yes. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, you've had many opportunities to talk about this and review it, so I'm not going to go over it in detail. I know you've seen it. There are a couple of things I want to draw your attention to, Commissioners, and also the code enforcement folks have drawn some things to our attention just within the last couple of weeks that we suggest are possible additions, and I want to go over those very quickly. Some may have been in front of you. There has been concern about the need to be specific about things like the flutter signs and other wind or air-activated things. I think you've probably all seen the air as skydancer things that shoot up in the air and then when they deflate, end up on the sidewalk or out over the roadway, and that's been a concern in a number of communities, and they have added those into their prohibition to flutter signs. Also, there's been concern about the sign spinner people all over the country because they spin on the sidewalks and they have the big signs and they block the sidewalk or they're right on the edge of the street, which creates a hazard. It's actually inconsistent with what we've put in our sign code as the justifications for controlling signage, and that is that you don't distract drivers, that it poses a hazard. And so, a number of places, many, many communities around the country had added into their prohibited sign section things that would clamp down on those sign spinners, and then they would define themselves as something different, so they ended up with this long list of things. Eventually, some have begun referring them to as commercial mascots because sometimes people will, if you don't allow people to bring out animals, and eventually when they couldn't do people or animals, they began showing up with robots. They're having a lot of trouble with that in California with robot or mannequins placed on the side of the road holding a big sign. So they've begun defining what is a mannequin to be a person, robot, or animal costume decorated in a function as a sign, and it includes a number of things. But also, if you're going to prohibit those, I had provided you language that has been used in other places and has kind of met the test of time. However, the city attorney had a chance to review it here quickly, actually since I passed it out to you, and has suggested striking the second sentence entirely under bullet 5 because it's not content neutral, just stopping right after the words "public rights away."
The idea is under the town of Gilbert Case versus Reed, you can't differentiate between commercial speech and political speech. So if you're going to prohibit sign spinners, you have to prohibit all sign spinners, not just commercial sign spinners, but also political or any other message. You can't regulate by reading what the message is on the sign.
Right, and the same...
Has to be content neutral.
Right, and the same principle would require some amendment to the definitions section for a commercial mascot to alter the first sentence, to cross out the last three words that are commercial advertising device and just replace that with "sign" and cross out the last sentence after the word "sign." And these have not been discussed by you before, but I wanted to provide you just with some language that were possibilities and things that others have done. Finally, one more issue that just came up recently, and that is that even the new version of the sign code is a little bit uncertain as to where political signs are allowed to be placed, and it provides an implication that they are allowed in the public right of way, which creates a great big bit of consternation throughout the community every time there's an election. There's one section that says that they can't be in the public rights way and another section that implies they can, and so we will need to go back into the code and just straighten that out to, we suggest prohibit them from...
Beach. Ms. Hahn, I don't believe is here, so we will go on to the next item. Next item is public comment. The floor is now open. Please remember to state your name and address, be clearly into the microphone, and be civil and respectful. Does anyone wish to speak? Public comment is now closed. Next, we have the Consent Agenda, Approval of the Minutes, Approval of Expenditure for Street Pole Holiday Decorations, which went up today, by the way, and they look great, and the Ford Pinellas Interlocal Agreement for Planning and Mapping Services and/or Special Project Work in the city of Madeira Beach. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to go forward with all three of those items, to approve them. I read them, and they all appear to warrant.
I'll second, but normally I don't like to spend money on consent agenda, but this is for the holiday lighting, and it's pretty cut and dry, so I second.
Any discussion? The floor is now open for public comment on this item. Floor is now closed. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Our next item is Ordinance 2018-14, Amendment to the Signed Ordinance, First Reading, Director Porteau.
Yes. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, you've had many opportunities to talk about this and review it, so I'm not going to go over it in detail. I know you've seen it. There are a couple of things I want to draw your attention to, Commissioners, and also the code enforcement folks have drawn some things to our attention just within the last couple of weeks that we suggest are possible additions, and I want to go over those very quickly. Some may have been in front of you. There has been concern about the need to be specific about things like the flutter signs and other wind or air-activated things. I think you've probably all seen the air as skydancer things that shoot up in the air, and then when they deflate, end up on the sidewalk or out over the roadway, and that's been a concern in a number of communities, and they have added those into their prohibition to flutter signs. Also, there's been concern about the sign spinner people all over the country because they spin on the sidewalks, and they have the big signs, and they block the sidewalk, or they're right on the edge of the street, which creates a hazard. It's actually inconsistent with what we've put in our sign code as the justifications for controlling signage, and that is that you don't distract drivers, that it poses a hazard. And so, a number of places, many, many communities around the country had added into their prohibited sign section things that would clamp down on those sign spinners, and then they would define themselves as something different, so they ended up with this long list of things. Eventually, some have begun referring them to as commercial mascots, because sometimes people will, if you don't allow people to bring out animals, and eventually when they couldn't do people or animals, they began showing up with robots. They're having a lot of trouble with that in California with robot or mannequins placed on the side of the road holding a big sign. So they've begun defining what is a mannequin to be, a person, robot, or animal costume to decorate it in a function as a sign, and it includes a number of things. But also, if you're going to prohibit those, I had provided you language that has been used in other places and has kind of met the test of time. However, the city attorney had a chance to review it here quickly, actually since I passed it out to you, and has suggested striking the second sentence entirely under bullet five, because it's not content neutral, just stopping right after the words "public rights way."
The idea is under the town of Gilbert Case versus Reed, you can't differentiate between commercial speech and political speech. So if you're going to prohibit sign spinners, you have to prohibit all sign spinners, not just commercial sign spinners, but also political or any other message. You can't regulate by reading what the message is on the sign.
Right, and the same...
Has to be content neutral.
Right, and the same principle would require some amendment to the definitions section for a commercial mascot to alter the first sentence, to cross out the last three words that are "commercial advertising device" and just replace that with "sign," and cross out the last sentence after the word "sign." And these have not been discussed by you before, but I wanted to provide you just with some language that were possibilities and things that others have done. Finally, one more issue that just came up recently, and that is that even the new version of the sign code is a little bit uncertain as to where political signs are allowed to be placed, and it provides an implication that they are allowed in the public right-of-way, which creates a great big bit of consternation throughout the community every time there's an election. There's one section that says that they can't be in the public rights way, and another section that implies they can, and so we will need to go back into the code and just straighten that out to, we suggest prohibit them from being placed in the right-of-way. Not only is it a clutter, but often the signs get placed right in the vision triangle and create a traffic hazard as well. And in the past, because the one section of the code that does not allow them, staff had been in the habit of going around and picking them up out of public rights way in parks and in places like that, and holding them here and allowing the owner of the sign to come and pick them up. This has been a longstanding practice, but again, there's that inconsistency that leaves it open to the possibility that political signs can be placed in the public rights way, and we recommend that that be amended.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, I do. Linda, if this first reading, if we do this first reading tonight, okay, and it passes, and then we have to wait for the next commission meeting in December, will that still give, if it passes, you know, in the second reading, second and final reading, then will that give Clara enough, will that give you enough time, Clara, to be sure that that information with regards to political signage is put into the packets that will be given to any potential candidates for next year's?
It's inconsistent, is what it's, the code says one place you can't put it in and the other you can, but we would actually want definitely to amend it one way or the other, but there should be plenty of time.
You should have plenty of time, okay, because I know that, I remember how you give out, you know, that specific information with regards to signage, and I'd want to make sure that it got put in.
Yeah, she'll include it in that next item for that December the 11th meeting. It'll be included in the agenda item itself.
Okay.
So we do have plenty of time to do that.
Right, okay. And it still does, the other thing was, I'm glad you used that terminology, whatever it was, spinner signs or whatever you said, because I always remember that from when you are in intersections in other cities, and you always have these people in costume, and they have these signs, and they roll around these signs, and I've always thought that was really visual pollution, and it really can get, I mean, it's a hazard, you know, to drivers, so that is being included in the limitations, or is being considered.
It's being considered.
Okay. Okay. And certainly, I'm not in favor of the flutter signs, although I think it's important for all of us to be able to express our, express what we think, but I think those flutter signs also, I've talked to a lot of people within our city who've been very concerned about them because they've almost had accidents because of those, because we have so much of those flutter signs in Madeira Beach, so, thank you.
Well, I was going to go on the other side of that. I like the flutter signs. I think the flutter signs really are used mainly by small businesses, and this is their way of being identified. If you take, for instance, Key West Shrimp over here on 150th, if you don't see their sign, you don't know there's a fish market there, and this helps identify the small businesses and what they do. There's a little cigar shop in the little strip mall up here on the corner of Golf and 150th, and it's, you know, a cigar shop, and he's got a flutter sign that says cigars, and if you didn't see that, you wouldn't know that little store was in there. So I think these flutter signs are important. If they can, you know, keep them from being in the way of traffic, in the view of the traffic, or blocking traffic to view, I don't see any reason why we can't use them, because I think it helps the small businesses, and this is their identity as to who they are and what they do, and I think it's important to give them the chance to do business here in town. Without those signs, they won't get any business, because people don't know they're there.
You know, I see the problem as sometimes that there can be too many of them, and that's a visual distraction, and then it's the same as having none. I mean, you can't, it doesn't help anybody if there's, everybody has a flutter sign.
Well, I'm not saying...
Sign pollution.
Well, I'm not saying everybody, it's just the fact that these small businesses, they need to be identified. They need to have the chance to do the business they want to do here in the city. Why are we making it so hard for small businesses to come here and do business? You know, let them have their signs out, advise them that they can't have them right on the street to block traffic view or anything like that, but I don't see any reason why they can't have them in front of their shops, so people can see who's there and what they do.
I personally don't like them. They get old, they get ragged, they get faded, they look bad, and they do block traffic. There's one on 140th that's been there for two years, and it blocks everybody turning right when it's up there.
But has anyone gone over there and asked her to move it a little bit to the side? I'm sure if she was told, she would do it. She may not realize that it blocks traffic, but if you go up and you ask her, would you mind bringing this closer to your building so it doesn't block the traffic? I'm sure they'd be willing to do that without a problem. And I think all the other ones do that use the flutter signs. Let them know, you know, you can have them, but don't block the traffic, don't block the sidewalk, put a little more restrictions on it there. But really, some of them, they're very well-kept. I have not seen any ragged ones. I've seen some really nice ones, and they're colorful, we're a tourist town, and the coloring is beautiful, and it kind of brightens things up. But again...
I could appreciate what Commissioner Hodges says, I can appreciate it, but I have had the, where I have personally asked some different businesses, not when they've been in the way, but when they've actually fallen on the ground, and, because I walk a lot, you know, and I see them a lot on 140th, and I've stopped and asked people, you know, you want me to put it back in the ground for you, you know, and, no, 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 I'll do it, and two weeks later, it's still laying on the ground. So I really, while I can appreciate, you know, your comments on it, I don't think it's a way to deter, to deter a small business at all, and I think that because we'd be giving them, and I think, Linda, in the last conversation on this, you said something about like a six-month period to use whatever materials they currently have, then that would give them the opportunity to maybe feel a little bit more diverse, and possibly with your experience, you could maybe pass along information or help them, you know, develop different signage, you know, or just follow the rules, you know. But I have a problem with the flutter signs because of the abuse of them, the way they look, and like I say, with the times that I've actually asked people to take them out of the ground. I've seen them in front of the, I think it's even the VFW, that I picked them up off the, you know, off the ground and picked them up, and tried to put them back in, or brought them inside and said, please take care of these, you know, they're in everybody's way, so.
Madam Mayor, if I may, one of the things that the board can consider if it is interested in possibly looking at some options concerning the feather signs, is some agencies, and Director Porteau can provide some, a little bit, a little bit more information concerning that, they allow for when a business is opening, they have the opportunity to, through a process with the city, to be able to get the opportunity to place those types of signage out to let folks know that, hey, we're open for business. Some other communities have looked at certain specific timeframes whereby if it is the peak or holiday season, that they're able to utilize that type of signage for the purposes of encouraging people to come to their businesses. So there is some mechanisms that you can put in place. I know even the city of Largo did something during the economic downturn to allow for those types of signage to be utilized, I think for a period of three months, once a year, and basically you got one bite of the apple. So there's some other things that if the board is interested in moving in that direction, staff can do some more research and bring that back at second reading, but I did want you to know that there are some options in place if you wanted to allow for somebody that is a business that's a grand opening, and they're just now establishing themselves in the community, and this provides additional exposure. There's ways to effectively do that, but I just wanted to state that to the board if that was an option or something you wanted to consider, that that's out there as well.
I would consider that option.
Amen.
Because as I said, pardon me?
Amen. Actually, we allow that in the sign code for banners, so there's already a provision to allow for that sort of temporary or special event type signage or things associated with the holiday season. So it's possible certainly to expand that to include flutter flags with the banners.
And I understand, Commissioner Hodges, that it does help businesses, but like, for instance, if Madeira Way, everyone had a flutter sign.
I think it'd be pretty.
But it wouldn't do any good, then, it'd be the same thing as having none of them. But to do it for special openings or special occasions, I think that would be great.
See, I really, I'm sorry to disagree on that or to have a different way of thinking, but I've seen that abused so many times, specifically in Madeira Beach, where a business opens, and three years later, that sign that was supposed to be removed 90 days after the business opened is still there. Now, I don't know how that deals with enforcement, obviously that's an enforcement issue, so if the board chose to do that for certain, you know, times of the year or for new businesses, it really needs to be put onto the code enforcement's regular, you know, regular log or whatever to know when that sign went up, because I see them still now, that they've been up, I mean, the business has been in business for over three years.
But, excuse me, there's so many that are up now, you wouldn't know.
Well, that's true.
So the one that is going to stand out is the new business that's coming in and being the only one up, it's going to kind of stand out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a desire from the board for staff to go forward and move and look at making some tweaks and modifications to the language for special events or specific period to allow for that type of signage? Because if we do define a specific period, let's just say for conversation's sake, November 24th to January 5th, if we know we have that block, we know that effectively that's the only time you're going to see them, and any sign that is out there past that, then effectively it's in violation, and we can just remove this line. Because I'm also thinking on the other side, what is it going to create for public safety when they have to go out there and look at some document? Well, Jonathan put up a sign on this day and put up a sign, is it three months? You know, it just, we don't want to create a really arduous process to enforce, but I think through public policy, we can maybe get something that the board can be comfortable with and allow for the small businesses to get that opportunity to gain some exposure during their peak season, because I spoke into a couple of businesses, and they have communicated that that signage does help bring and draws people's attention, especially now in light of red tide, you know, with their profit margins being down, you know, this would be something to look at, and we can always make a modification if the board says, we tried it, it doesn't work, we can come back and make some tweaks to it.
I think with regards to that, I think that we should, I would like to see the board go forward with the first reading of the Ordinance 2018-14, and then after it becomes, after it goes into force, okay, that yes, at some future date, we should, we should go back and maybe look at it again, but I think we need to get our arms around this because we've been working on it for so long, and...
And to your point, Vice Mayor, one of the things that certainly we would like to get this ordinance in place, but I would, I would have to defer to the city attorney. If we were to make the changes and they weren't substantive changes, that we can bring it back to the board for second reading, and it can be adopted as part of the ordinance, but we don't want to make overarching major public policy changes to this, because then we run the risk of having to postpone and go through second reading, or go through first and second reading again. We would just want to make minor tweaks to allow for us to be able to move forward for second reading, if it's the board's pleasure.
I think the header is broad enough to encompass most things you want to do. If you look at the header of the ordinance, as long as you stay within that header, you're okay.
Okay. So I think we have consensus to do that. Meanwhile, I'll open the floor for public comment on this item. Floor is now closed. All right.
Can you say to do that? Could you give a little more direction on exactly what that was?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I withdraw, it's okay. Go ahead.
Okay.
And Madam Mayor, just for a point of clarity and for the public record, the Community Development Department is working on a specific overlay district to look at signage in John's Past Village different than signage throughout the city, and so it's important to state that, because we are going to allow for a little bit more unique, more festive, for lack of better terms, or signage that matches the character of the village, and so we're working on that. We will be working with the local merchants and the community to find what that delicate balance is, but that's not something that is incorporated as part of the policies and procedures that will be incorporated here. There's going to be another document that will be coming forward before this board to look at signage in John's Past Village differently than we look at it throughout the city, because we know that's a unique area of our community.
Yes, although this document does reference the special area plan, so it allows you to do that, and it enables you making that new plan.
So I second Debbie's motion. Did we have a motion?
Let's make a motion.
I thought you did.
I said I would be in support, because I identified the ordinance and everything, but, yes, I move to accept Ordinance 2018-14, amending Chapter 2, 102 signs on the first reading.
I second. Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
I'm going to read the ordinance first, the ordinance heading. Ordinance Number 2018-14, An Ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, Amending Chapter 102 Signs to Meet Content Neutrality Requirements and to Clarify Purpose and Application, Resolving Conflicts and Inconsistencies, Expanding Definition of Prohibited Signs, Amending Sign Dimensions, Placement and Numbers, Amending Realty Signs, Providing a Date for Discontinuation of Newly Prohibited Signs, Amending Method of Measurement, Amending Temporary Exemptions, Amending Signs During Election Period, Providing for Conflict, Providing for Separability, and Providing for an Immediate Effective Date. I'll call the roll. Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
No.
Mayor Black?
Next, we have Ordinance 2018-15.
Ordinance 2018-15, An Ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, Rehearing Ordinance 2017-07, Amending Chapter 6 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Madeira Beach pertaining to alcoholic beverages by amending Section 6-2, Closing Hours for Business Establishments Serving and/or Selling Alcoholic Beverages to Allow for the Sale of Alcohol Beginning at 8:00 a.m. any day of the week due to an advertising error and by providing for an effective date. The City of Madeira Beach, the Board of Commissioners adopted Ordinance 2017-07 to amend Chapter 6 of the Code of Ordinances on July 11, 2017. Due to an error in the public hearing date, publishing the notice enacting the ordinance, the amended legislation must be re-adopted, so that's what we are doing tonight, is putting that back on the books. I mean, it's already been adopted, it's just that there was an error in the advertising date.
Any discussion from the board?
Pretty cut and dry.
All right. Floor is open for public comment. Floor is now closed. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, and we approve Ordinance 2018-15.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Next, we have Resolution 2018-13, Establishing January 19th as Patricia Shon's Day in the City of Madeira Beach. City manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the board, pursuant to the conversations that the Board of Commissioners had with staff, staff has brought forward Resolution 2018-13 that effectively recognizes January 19th as Miss Patricia Shon's Day in the City of Madeira Beach. The change with the resolution is that this will no longer be a paid holiday for city employees, and by making this modification, it will result in a savings of $12,500 to the City of Madeira Beach. This also will serve as appropriate notification to staff to communicate to them that that day is no longer a city holiday, but individuals throughout the community are certainly encouraged to go out and do community projects to celebrate the life legacy and the contribution Miss Shon's made as a civic leader in our... made as a civic leader in our community. At this particular moment, staff recommends approval of resolution two thousand eighteen dash thirteen.
Any discussion? Floor is now open for public comment. Pardon me?
I was going to make a comment.
Go ahead.
Yes, with regards to this, I'm glad that we finally have clarified this, but I would like to call the attention to the board to understand that it actually was never meant, or it was never confirmed by ordinance or by any other means, by resolution, ordinance, or anything, to be a paid holiday in perpetuity, okay? The minutes of the February second, two thousand seventeen meeting clarify that Mayor Palladina stated that Pat was well-respected around Pinellas County work, work that she had started is being completed today, there are elected officials in attendance today. He proclaimed January nineteenth remembrance of Patricia Shon's Day. He said that Pat had a lot of love for city employees, she always talked about the employees and residents. He asked for a motion, okay, just a motion, to recognize January nineteenth as remembrance of Patricia Shon's Day, and to recognize any, to recognize city employees with a day off. It never was even clarified that it was to be paid, so really, what we're doing now, I reckon, is memorializing just the, that clarification, so, and that's directly from the minutes, so, thank you.
Floor is now open for public comment. Floor is now closed. We have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-eighteen dash thirteen.
I second the motion.
Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
I'll read the resolution heading into the record. Resolution two thousand eighteen dash thirteen, a resolution of the city of Madeira Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, recognizing January nineteenth of every year as a community Patricia Shon's Day, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next, we have resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty, procedures for nominating Volunteer of the Year, Citizen of the Year, and Employee of the Year. City manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the board, this item before you this evening is resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty, setting forth the procedures for nominating Volunteer of the Year, Citizen of the Year, and Employee of the Year. In our conversation with the Board of Commissioners on October twenty-third, staff brought forward the elements associated with the procedures to effectively nominate folks for those particular awards. Enclosed in the resolution is the process that staff will make sure it is memorialized in the updates to the Personnel Manual, and it captures the intent from the conversation that we did have with the board back in October. The fiscal impact to this is minimal, because we are going to be purchasing trophies and certain trinkets to recognize the contribution that folks have made to the community. Also, with some of the awards, the application and the submissions will be available electronically, or they will be able to collect that information here at City Hall, and then, in certain cases, there will be review committees that will bring that before the board to recognize the outstanding Citizen of the Year, the Volunteer of the Year, and the Employee of the Year. So we have captured what we believe to be the board's intent, and staff is recommending approval of resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty.
I just want to add that we had a great event last week to celebrate the Volunteer of the Year and Citizen of the Year, and I think it went very well.
Very nice.
Employee of the Year. Wasn't it the Employee of the Year and the Volunteer of the Year?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Any discussion from the board? Floor is open for public comment. Floor is now closed. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to pass resolution two zero one eight dash twenty.
I second.
Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll, or read the ordinance?
Resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty, a resolution established in the city of Madeira Beach Awards Program was intended to recognize the city residents, volunteers, and city employees. Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next, we have resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-one, granting the city manager authority to execute and/or waive any and all fees for the downtown merchants event. City manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the board, this item before you is to seek approval of resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-one, granting the city manager the authority to execute and waive any and all fees associated with the downtown merchants event pursuant to the direction that was provided to staff at the October twenty-third meeting. Staff is requesting that authorization. The Madeira Way markets have benefited from a downtown market in the past, and because of the impending construction that will occur on the hotel property on Madeira Way, we had thought that it would be prudent for us to discourage the market to continue on Wednesday because of construction material, as well as vehicles traversing that roadway, and there would be a challenge as that particular development will be, they've already started work on the seawall, and they will be going vertical anytime here soon. So in conversations with the downtown merchants, they have gotten together and asked for the city's support to help reconstitute the downtown market. In conversations with staff, we already have an ordinance in place on the books that prohibits construction on Sunday. So in conversations with the downtown merchants, they were excited about the prospective opportunity to move forward with a market on Madeira Way commencing in November, and then another event in December. One of the things that they are working diligently to attempt to achieve is becoming a five oh one C six, to where they can assume the responsibilities. What we're asking from the board this evening is to grant the city manager the authority to effectively waive the fees for the purposes of the event. We will be collecting any fees for booths, et cetera, and I've also got confirmation from Mr. Kevin Bowden, who is the developer, that has committed to putting forth twenty-five hundred dollars for each of the events, both in November and December, to help mitigate any cost that the city would incur, associated with this event. This is just asking for authorization to do this for November and December, and then the first quarter of two thousand and nineteen, we will be bringing back a report, giving a more thorough analysis and more information on the progress that the Madeira Way markets have, Madeira Way Market individuals have gone as far as getting their five oh one C six established. So they've already started the process, they've had very productive meetings. This is an opportunity to effectively give them the shot in the arm, to assist them, and certainly capture some of the folks that we anticipate coming to our community to shop during the holiday season. So staff is recommending approval of resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-one.
Any discussion from the board?
I just want to say, Jonathan, excuse me? Go ahead. I was in Madeira Way this afternoon for a little while, and spoke to some of the merchants. They are so excited about this, and I think it's going to be, really work out well, because they're working really hard. And they asked me to remind everyone that it is Sunday, the Sunday from ten AM to three PM, and that they're going to have the arts and crafts, live music, produce, food and drinks, and they just hope everyone will join them, and hopefully, it will be successful, because they are working very hard on it.
Sunday, ten to three?
Ten to three, yes.
I kind of think this resolution's just a moot point. If, if the developer's already going to pay the hard cost of it, what's the purpose of the resolution? It's already getting paid for.
Well, there's insurance documentation, there's some other things that we need to execute, road closure, those types of aspects. So it's, in essence, it's a co-sponsored city event, so there may not be, the hard cost may be absorbed, but there may be some other ancillary paperwork that I need to complete with the assistance of staff to ensure that we're following the appropriate permitting process that we would ask anyone that was going through a special event permitting. So that's, that's exactly what this resolution gives the authority.
They basically need to do a special event permit, correct?
Right, but it would be the city effectively doing that, because they have not established as a entity yet.
And because we're collecting booth fees.
And we will be collecting, yeah, we will be collecting booth fees.
Right, but I don't want to, I don't want to put it out there that we're going to waive fees for all that, because that's, that's where the residents didn't want to go, they don't want to pay that. And, and if we have one group come to us asking for that, what's going to keep every other group from coming to us and asking for that? They already asked a lot of us, in waiving fees, and giving away parking, and, and all other kinds of things.
Well, and, and this is intended to be that hand-up necessary to help these local businesses, and we wanted to bring this back again in January, and hopefully, that gives them enough time to where they have formulated as a entity, to where then they can start managing that and us not assume the responsibility. But in order to capture the November and December markets, which are going to be the bigger markets, there's no other way that we would be able to do that unless we proceeded forward as recommended by staff. And so we're, we're caught in a, a difficult situation, and we did not want to lose November and December, because this, in, in most cases, is going to be the biggest market that they'll experience, especially if they move forward in, in subsequent months to continue the market. So this was the city's way to try to help them, and understanding there's things that will come before this board on a case-by-case scenario, but this is something that we've worked with the developer, and I, I know it's going to be a longstanding relationship to make sure that those businesses are successful, because they have a vested interest to make sure they continue to be successful there as lease-paying tenants. So this is just a, a small assistance to get us from point A to point B, and then we'll have this discussion with the board, and determine what's the plans moving forward after the market in November and December.
So basically, it's just a kickstart to get them going?
Absolutely, madam.
I think that's a good, a good thing.
But actually, it's, when you consider that, if Mr. Bowden is going, and there's going to be one market in November, and one market in December, right? So if you consider that, Mr. Bowden is going to essentially take care of, I mean, twenty-five hundred dollars should cover, should it not, the closing of the road, the, or, well, that might be our hard gus, but the collecting, the booth entry fees, that's going to be somebody in City Hall collecting it, right?
Right, that would be our Recreation Department that would be collecting that, correct?
Okay. And the, have you checked with the insurance company to see what the minimal expenditure is? Is it, I mean, is it really little?
It, it's really insignificant when we look at what the exposure is, because we have large-scale events like that.
Okay, and you're just going to identify the days that the market's going to happen, so it's not really for a two-month period, it's going to be a two-day period.
Yeah, it's going to be a, a day period, it's two days, yes.
Okay. And, and the setup of the market. Since it is on a Sunday, that was what I was thinking of, too, you know, I, I mean, I was just curious, since it would be on a Sunday, that we'd be paying city staff more, more for Sunday, unless they took it as a comp thing or something, but twenty-five hundred dollars, I would think, would cover that.
Well, and, and the arrangement that we had with the previous vendor was that, basically, they broke down most of the cones, and stacked them up in one central location, so effectively, it was a staff person going out there, collecting the items, and then we're gone, they set up the tent, they break down the tents, they set up the tables, they break down the tables. So realistically, it would be collecting the city items that we put out to effectively close the roadway.
Okay, because I would think that twenty-five hundred dollars per day would be, would be fine for that. I, I would like to ask, would you consider asking the merchants on Madeira Way if they would allow, for instance, or maybe you already have, the nine eleven committee to have a...
I could certainly ask them that.
You know, a table, pro, whatever they call it, you know, not to charge them, okay? As a way of making maybe a little bit more...
Well, you know, as a, as a co-sponsored event, and as a city, we can make that, we can make that decision.
Okay, well, I think that would be a good idea, I would like to do that.
Okay.
Because it's a way of more exposure, too.
Yeah.
And, and then, at the end of the year, or the first of January, somehow, you will give us an accounting of...
I, I am going to be bringing forward a full accounting of those two events at the first meeting in January.
Okay, even though we have no, will have no liability going forward from January, but you'll still tell us what...
Yes.
Okay, okay. Well, I, I would go for it for, for November and December. I do think that without the, the developer, without Mr. Bowden throwing in, or, you know, donating that money, I would probably be a little bit more hesitant, because I think that a lot of the questions that would be asked of the market, or a lot of the, gosh, what am I trying to say? The, maybe the reason that they wouldn't be seeing any business down there would be directly affected by any of the building, the starting of the building construction. So as long as he's willing to do that.
Floor is open for public comment on this item. Floor is now closed. We have a motion?
Yes, I would make a motion to pass resolution, move, pass resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-one, granting the city manager the authority to execute and waive fees for the downtown merchants event.
I second. Will the city clerk please read the resolution and call the roll?
Resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-one, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the city of Madeira Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, providing authority to the city manager to waive fees in support of Madeira Way Merchants Market, and providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
No.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next, we have resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two, Small Business, Small Business Saturday.
Madam Mayor, members of the board, resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-two recognizes Saturday, November twenty-four, two thousand and eighteen, as Small Business Saturday. One of the things that is very important to the local economy, specifically here in Madeira Beach, and in other small beaches, communities, is the contribution that small businesses make to the US economy. Nearly sixty to eighty percent of all US jobs come from small businesses. They are the quintessential backbone of the American economy, and they have thirteen times more patents than your Fortune five hundred companies. The city is taking the position to be staunch supporters, and, and making sure that our local businesses are successful. One of the things that we want to roll out, and continue to encourage our community, is to shop locally. We have one of the best shopping areas in the state of Florida, with John's Pass Village, with over a hundred and three eclectic mixtures of shops, and restaurants, and boutiques. And one of the things that we wanted to do to incentivize folks from all over Pinellas County, and all over the region, and all over the state for that matter, to visit our community, is to look to see if the board would be so inclined to waive parking on Saturday, November twenty-fourth, and Sunday, November twenty-fifth, to recognize the contributions that small businesses make to the US economy, and to the economy here in Madeira Beach, and then recognizing Small Business Saturday and shopping locally. The projected fiscal impact, if we rewind the clock and we look back to what last year's numbers were, the impact was roughly about eleven thousand dollars. Now, realize, red tide wasn't on our shores, so things were profoundly different there as well. If you have had the opportunity to look at some of our parking lots over the last couple of weeks, we've seen a little bit of an uptick of folks here, but not nearly the numbers that we have projected. I've had the opportunity to speak to a couple of our local businesses, and their profit margins are down between twenty to forty percent from where they have been in the past. So it is staff's recommendation that we recognize Small Business Saturday, and by doing so, that the city consider waiving parking for Saturday, November twenty-fourth, and Sunday, November twenty-fifth, and the parking meters will come back on at midnight on Monday, November twenty-sixth. At this time, staff stands prepared to answer any questions, and is recommending approval of resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two.
Jonathan, are we talking about all the meters in the city?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I just have a, a question, after I've read this several times. I know that there's so many private parking lots now within the city, there's four or five, or whatever, five or six of them, and two or three of them are right down in this area, I believe. One is at the other end of Madeira Way, and then at the CVS. And I just wish that there was some, some kind of way, I think that for the city to, I think that Small Business Saturday is a good way to, to help businesses. But you see, our, the way I look at it is, I guess, our residents have passes to park everywhere. But you see, our, the way I look at it is, I guess, our residents have passes to park everywhere, okay? Free. And I don't like the idea of, for instance, I guess, and I'm not picking on any one thing, but I was thinking of Archbald, you know? Why should we let that parking be free when there's, you know, four or five companies, private companies that are charging four and five bucks an hour in those locations? And even for two days, if we're giving it away, once again, I mean, we've, I know that the businesses have lost money because there haven't been any tourists, but nobody's come to my door as a, you know, resident and offered to do anything for me because of the red tide.
What does beach parking have to do with it?
Well, it's, well, it's a, it's a cost for doing business. I mean, I think that we've, I don't know, I feel like we've done a lot for the, in relinquishing our fees, even though people have said, well, you probably couldn't have paid that much anyway. We don't really know what we could have made if we kept the, if we had not waived the parking, okay? I don't know, what do y'all think? I just, I'm a little bit confused about it, I guess, I haven't.
Madam Mayor, if I may, to a couple of the points that were articulated just a moment ago, is that also is the first weekend that the market starts in the downtown. And so that is another mechanism to utilize as a way to get folks to come here and assist. Because yes, we know that the other for-profit company is charging for parking, but Director Portell can tell you that one of the things that we're looking at is making sure that there are some enforcements to the code and effectively moving away from that singular use for parking. Because the way the code allows for it is that the city is the only entity that can effectively charge for parking. The reason that we haven't been aggressive in our enforcement on that is we know that once we take that stance and that approach, we then have major parking issues in Johns Pass Village to accommodate the employees and the visitors in that area. But nonetheless, Director Portell and staff are working diligently to effectively try to remedy this situation. But when we look at the parking holistically, the residents don't pay to park. The folks that do pay to park are our visitors that are coming to the area. So we wanted to have any incentive or any opportunity to get folks to come here versus going to a mall in Clearwater or St. Petersburg. And maybe that's an opportunity to really get folks here that traditionally would not come here. And from the conversations that I've had and the phone calls that we've received, is it was very much appreciated when the board did recognize that red tide is on the shores and the impact it's had to those local businesses. So we said, can we carve out this, these two days to promote and market that, hey, we're open for business and we value the influx of folks coming here? And anything that we can do to make somebody's, you know, experience here to spend a little bit more money in Madeira Beach, that, there's a value to that. Because our businesses do pay taxes, they do pay, they have tangible personal property tax, they have property taxes, they have payroll tax, so there's other sales tax, there's other benefits that the city does receive when you have a viable business community. So the concern is that we have some businesses that this small gesture certainly would mean a lot. And it may be a little help for those that are starting off the market to have people come and spend a little time with us. And so that was the intent behind moving forward and asking the board to allow for the waiver of those fees for the two days.
Okay, because I think that maybe what I was really trying to justify or work out in my own mind, I've had a lot of people tell me that they think that these private lots are also city lots. I don't know if y'all have ever had that, maybe it's because I see so many people around different areas, you know? And they don't differentiate between that, they really don't. They think we're charging $2.50 an hour in some meters and $4 or $5 an hour in other meters, even though it says Florida Parking very clearly. So I guess what I'm saying is if Director Portell is actively trying to do something with regards to those other situations that differentiates the city from those private lots, because people still go away with a bad feeling in their mouth when they have to pay, you know, the $5 an hour and they just don't think it's, they, that's right, they think it's the city. Okay, so we're getting the flack one way or the other. And I guess that's why I brought up Archbald, because it just seemed like it was uncharacteristic to, you know, to say not to charge for parking there. But yet if everybody and a lot of people, not everybody, but a lot of people think that those other two or three parking lots in this area are also city lots and we're charging for them, then what's the sense of doing it? But if I know that there's some progress or some, something being done to straighten that situation out, at least make people aware, put up a big sign.
I think most of the city lots that are there for parking are identified as parking for Madeira Beach.
You're right.
So they should be identified and, you know, they're pretty good sized signs.
But they don't pay attention, you know, they still say, you know, even though I say, no, it's Florida Parking, you know, it's a different entity, you know, they still will, you know, no, 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 you know.
Well, it might be a good idea though to do some kind of public announcement now and then to explain that to people. I don't know.
I didn't mean to deviate, but I was just trying to say that, you know, I just know that's the situation. I know that we're talking about just eliminating the fees for, you know, Saturday and Sunday, so.
Well, it is Small Business Saturday and we do support small businesses. So I think that this is something that they appreciate and would really like to happen. I'll open it for public comment now. I'll use the handheld. We'll try it, doesn't matter.
Travis Palladino, 267 Rex Place, Madeira Beach, Florida. Commissioners, that is, it sounds like an idea of definitely opening a parking for small businesses. Opening a small business, owning one, I understand, you know, it would help. But my question is, how are you going to market this? We're only a couple of ways from that date. And I know Ms. Weinstein brought up a couple of good questions and also you, Madam Mayor. Would it be better to discuss this and maybe do something to where you could market it and let everybody know somewhere closer to the week of Christmas? I mean, that way you can get it out there. Or are you just planning on passing this, sending an email out to the 600 residents that are on the email list? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, board members. My name is Ronnie. My name is Ronnie Galant, I'm a member of the Madeira Beach Town Center Development Group. We do have the parking lot near RE/MAX that we would be willing to waive those fees for those days if that would help. So we have another parking lot by phrase, however, that's going to be under construction. So that's not going to be available, unfortunately, it's going to be taped off. So, but the other parking lot, we are, you know, willing to waive those fees. Thank you.
How many cars does that park on? How many, how many cars does that lot by RE/MAX, was it 25?
Ah, like 15.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, so the other question, oh, sorry, sorry Doug.
Doug Izzo with the Tampa Bay Beaches Chamber of Commerce. I just appreciate hearing the business friendly idea. And I just wanted to tag on a little bit and let everybody know that there is Small Business Saturday materials as far as banners, signs, carpets, balloons, anything you need, it's all at the kiosk in Johns Pass. Come by and pick it up whenever you have time.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Public comment is now closed.
So Mayor, I was going to ask the city manager one question, okay? So how would the, I know that it's easy enough to turn the switch off, okay, not to charge for parking, but how would we, since it is the 24th and the 25th, how would we advertise that? Or we don't have to advertise it, but?
Yeah, we plan on, the public information officer and I have talked about what we will do effectively to engage the media. And we anticipate that being the first community to effectively do this, we can see hopefully an opportunity where the press does pick up this, a bit of information, assuming it does pass. So we do have some things in place to market and promote this. But also on the other side is, we will work with our vendor. They are very responsive and Director Pierce knows that very well that if we give them adequate notice, they can have those meters back on instantaneously because it's all done pretty quickly as far as digital. The only issue that when we had our conversation earlier today, that if you have it, go for one day and stop, it's a little bit more of a process. So if we have those two days, it allows for them to effectively put it into the system easier. And we thought, you know, Saturday and Sunday would be a good opportunity to waive those and help out our local businesses.
Okay, but we're not going to spend any money making signs or anything?
No, 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 no.
We're not going to do any of that?
No, no.
Okay.
I know when we did the parking fees or waived them during red tide, we put signs on the parking box itself. Is that something which you had intended to do?
Yes, yep, we will do some digital signage on the meters themselves so people know. And then we'll also make sure that we promote through all the means that we have available. And I know our partners at the Chambers of Commerce will also put that information out. And then ultimately hoping that the local businesses grab the torch and help us promote that, hey, parking in Madeira Beach for Small Business Saturday and Sunday is free. So come on and spend some time with us and, you know, part ways with some of your hard earned dollars to help some of our local businesses.
Any more discussion? We have a motion?
I'll make the motion to pass resolution 2018-22, recognizing Saturday, November 24, 2018, as Small Business Saturday and requesting a parking fee suspension for 11/24 and 11/25 to support small businesses.
A second. Will the city clerk please read the resolution and call the roll?
Resolution 2018-22, declaring Saturday, November 24, 2018, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Madeira Beach. Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next we have resolution 2018-23, appointing a member of the Board of Commissioners to serve as the 2019 Seafood Festival liaison. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the board, this item is resolution 2018-23, requesting the appointment of a member of the Board of Commissioners to serve as the 2019 Seafood Festival Liaison pursuant to the previous resolution that the board executed to state its unwavering support and commitment to ensuring that the seafood festival remains here in Madeira Beach. There was also some language incorporated in that resolution that the Board of Commissioners will appoint a member to serve on the Planning and Organizing Committee for the Seafood Festival. Knowing that that planning and process, the planning and organizing process will probably commence as early as January, staff thought it was pertinent that we bring forward this item for the board to have a discussion about the potential appointment to this particular position. Also, I think it's germane to add to the discussion that the city of Madeira Beach does have a seat on the Johns Pass Village Association as an ex officio seat that discusses more items than just the seafood festival. So there is an opportunity, if it is the board's pleasure, to consider looking at having a liaison exclusively for the seafood festival and then an opportunity to have that other member serve in that ex officio seat. What we will recommend, if it's the board's pleasure to go in that space, we would bring forward another resolution that would appoint a board member to serve in the ex officio seat on the Johns Pass Village Association Board. And that seat would not look at, they would look at all items associated in the village when we talk about the capital improvements planning process, when we look at opportunities to market and promote, when we look at the kiosk, those types of things. When we have those conversations, that particular individual would serve in that capacity. Now, there will be a staff liaison for both or that one individual that can serve in dual capacities if necessary. But they will ultimately bring items back before the Board of Commissioners to update you on what is happening either related to the event or to the progress that we're making over in Johns Pass Village. The intent behind this is certainly to reaffirm our commitment to our businesses in Johns Pass Village to be more involved and more engaged in what's going on and to make sure that the board is always attuned on multiple levels because obviously you get the phone calls from your constituents. So we want to make sure that you're plugged into what's going on. So at this particular moment, staff is recommending approval of resolution 2018-23 and requesting that the Board of Commissioners appoint a member to serve as the liaison to the Johns Pass Seafood Festival Planning and Organizing Committee. And staff stands prepared to answer any questions that you may have. And if we can have the city clerk read the title?
Resolution 2018-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the city of Madeira Beach, appointing a member of the commission to serve as a liaison for the Board of Commissioners concerning the planning and oversight of the 2019 Seafood Festival. I also want to mention, we did get an email recommending Commissioner Hodges to serve. That was from the, one, someone from the organization.
I can make a comment? Well, I read it and everything and I guess I am a little bit confused because as late as October the 22nd, when I went out of town in the Tampa Bay Times, it specifically said it's the last year ever for Madeira Beach's 37th annual event. Now, I know that the city came back and said, no, 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 we want to work with, you know, want to work and make sure that this works. But it was pretty apparent to me from this and also from the meetings all the way back in August, when Jonathan and I attended a meeting, that the seafood, that the organization that was handling it definitely did not want to handle it. But I guess more importantly, I think that we, I guess, I think that we need to wait until after the final accounting and the filing of the seafood profit and loss statement. And the, I think John, John Dothrath, I think Commissioner Dothrath requested something about charities, named charities and the amounts that he wanted to know about in this final document. And I just think that before anything is named, I think that we need to wait until after we get that accounting, until the end of the year to do anything.
Are we going to put the festival out for an RFP?
That's a decision that this board would have to make, but staff would not recommend moving forward in that vein until you get all the information from the event organizers and hear from them yourself whether they wish to proceed forward with the organizing the festival as they have in the past. I had a productive conversation today with the event organizers and it's still in the preliminary stages. But I think one of the major points of contention that the board had with waiving of the fees has been cured. And I would like a little bit more time to bring that to a head to where I can share with the board effectively what that is and what that incorporates. And then the board can hear the information and then provide staff direction as to how you would like to proceed.
Well, I'd like to see it go out for an RFP. It was all over Facebook, all over social media, this is the last seafood festival, so that's their last one. Let's put it after, let's see what other promoters are out there that can do a good job. Because there's definitely a lot of bigger, bigger ones out there. And I'm sure they would love to get a hold of that festival.
I know, I personally, I remember emailing you that someone had emailed to me and I directly sent it to you, expressing interest in being a part of it if truly, as the organization said, that they didn't want anything to do with it anymore. I know things change and everything, but I'm just saying the appetite, you know, by a lot of other people is out there. So, but I really think that we need to wait until the, until we receive the final.
Well, and I think that since, you know, I don't want to speak on behalf of the event organizers, but I think that the decision was predicated on some personal health items that they wanted to make sure were, the appropriate time was given to that to go through those things. So I did want to, I think it's appropriate to allow for them to communicate from their perspective perspective why that was, was stated. Nonetheless, it would be, it would be staff's recommendation that we allow for them to come forward with their report. You could have that discussion with them. And then there's some pinch points that were communicated by the Board in previous conversations that I think we've, we've been able to remedy and make some really good progress, I think, in just the, the brief conversation that I did have today to get it to where the, the, the issue that the Board has, has communicated and the residents have communicated would, in essence, be a non-issue.
Well, actually, we got two different things going on here. I would just like to see the possibility of RFP being put on the workshop agenda and just leave it at that for the one in November, the workshop in November, because this is a totally different issue on whether we're going to do that or not.
Well, regardless of whether the Johns Pass Seafood Association goes, stays on as the promoter or we get another one, that's good to send out an RFP. It still wouldn't hurt to have a seafood liaison.
Liaison.
And whether we do, it's, we could do it now or we could wait until we make, have a final decision. I, I don't think it would hurt to wait. We could table it or we could go ahead.
I'm good with table.
I'm for waiting until after we get the, the reports. I mean, when, when, there's no hurry with it and it might reveal other things. I mean, we don't know what, what might happen between now and then since they made the decision as quickly as they did after the festival, you know, saying that, okay, so that's why I think it should be left as, I mean, I think the resolution was premature.
Do we need a motion to table?
Yes.
I make a motion to table Resolution 2018-23.
And I second the motion.
I'll open the floor for public comment.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor, Commission Travis Palladino, 267 Rex Place, Madeira Beach, Florida. As of last week, I was appointed to be the new liaison from the Johns Pass Merchants Association. So I'll, I know our conversation with the City Manager today, I thought was very productive. And some of the things that was said in the past was, I believe, Ms. Flynn's honor health. So things moving forward, we are hoping that something can be worked out with the city for the Johns Pass Seafood Festival to continue here in the city of Madeira Beach. But there is other cities that have come to us that want to do it. So it might behoove the Commission to go ahead and look at there. Just remember, this event takes about $300,000 to put on. Also, the Johns Pass Seafood Festival is trademarked and owned by the Merchants Association. So hopefully some discussions can go on. Also, looking at a liaison from the Commission being appointed to either the Seafood Festival Committee or the Johns Pass Merchants Association should be the same person because basically if it does work out, hopefully that the seafood festival is done by the Merchants Association, the same person should be working with the same, both groups because basically those two are the same groups. So, Madam Vice Mayor, that was a very good idea to go ahead and hold off to see where the city is, wants to go with this event. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? The floor is now closed for public comment. Any more discussion? Do we have a motion?
We have the motion and the second.
I already made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Will City Clerk please read the resolution and call the roll?
I've already read the resolution.
We call the roll?
Yes, ma'am.
So wait, wait, we're not voting on this resolution. We're voting to table it, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next, we have the approval of the Enterprise Fleet Management Plan and Rental Agreement. Director Pierce?
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, we talked about in the FY 2019 budget process about the possibility of owning vehicles versus leasing. And this has been kind of a, something that the City Manager, one of the City Manager's initiatives and really an idea he's brought forth. We had a budget workshop on the July 17th where Mr. Jeff Harbaugh, who's here tonight, presented the Enterprise Fleet Management Concept and, and mentioned how we can have some cost savings, have a better productive fleet and better maintenance that would go along with that, along with some other advantages as well. And most recently, at the September 25th BOC workshop, he also presented the types of vehicles that, that would be replaced in the replacement worksheet that he presented. So tonight, we're presenting the Enterprise Master Equity Lease Agreement and Replacement Worksheet for, this would be a, basically a five-year agreement. And I know Ralph has probably read the fine print, but there is an out clause on this based on the, it's like a non-appropriations clause that would, if after you, the second, after the first year, if the city could, does not have the appropriate funds, that there would be a, a way out of this. Also, I'd like to mention too, while it does mention the insurance that, that Enterprise could provide, we would stick with our own insurance company, or that is the desire, unless somewhere down the line, it could be proved to be, you know, more cost savings through Enterprise. The fiscal impact, there is, the City Manager wanted me to put this in here, there is a total amount of $237,000 in the CIP for vehicle purchases for the FY 2019 Capital Improvement Budget. That's all funds. And entering into this lease agreement or such as this would result in a large portion of this amount that would be, that would not be expended. And if the Board goes, goes ahead with this, we have basically isolated already about seven vehicles that we've targeted, three basically from last year that we have, that we did not purchase and four from this year that we would go ahead and, and use this agreement So is there any questions?
Yes. The, the CIP funding, is that coming by department?
It's by fund.
Okay.
And basically, in 2018, there was an automobile from Archibald Sanitation and the General Fund Rec Center, those three vehicles we basically did not purchase.
Archibald has a vehicle?
Believe it's a vehicle 36 that was budgeted last year, but we did not go ahead and purchase it.
Why does Archibald need a vehicle?
It was in the budget. Again, these seven vehicles would come to the Board and, and a plan going forward after the Board decided to, one wasn't, that they didn't agree with it and that would be up to, up to the Board. But that, that vehicle was in the budget, is in the budget.
Killing it.
And then for 2019...
Totally raping the fund is what, what's going, what they're doing.
In 2019, there was a sanitation vehicle, another sanitation vehicle, actually three sanitation vehicles and a general fund vehicle. So there's seven vehicles that would, that we would target tentatively. And then also, I think the next step would be, and Jeff and I have talked about this, we wouldn't stop there. We would at least have a plan going forward and targeting other vehicles in years to come. And, and when we would, what years that we would target those. And that actually would help the budget process and the CIP process, if we got a, a, a jump head start on this. And it would actually start the budget process from the capital improvement plan a lot earlier, which, which would be a help.
Are GPS is included in this?
Absolutely. That's one thing that Jeff and I had talked about. We want to be able to track our vehicles, where they're going and, and monitor those at all parts of the day. And by the way, Jeff's here. If the Board has any, any further questions regarding the plant, the lease?
Just Archibald, but I think we can do that one offline.
Okay.
We'll start there.
I would just like to get a, a brief scenario, either from you or from Jeff. What happens in year one? I mean, what, what are we phased to do in year one? And how, and, and I can't remember what you said about what happens to the vehicles that we are replacing. Do you take them or are we responding? I just couldn't remember that and I couldn't see it in here.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jeff Harbaugh with Enterprise Fleet Management. So year one, there are seven vehicles that we've targeted for replacement. So what that process would look like is we would schedule for specific vehicles to be procured on your behalf. We would arrange for those to be delivered to the city and then we would pick up the older vehicles and, and take them for secondary resale. So the logistics of that, we, we manage all of that for you with your approval, of course.
Okay, that's...
And Madam Mayor, if I may, one of the things that is interesting about the arrangement and I think important is that they look at the vehicles that are costing us more to maintain and upkeep. And so the vehicle analysis is done based on what the cost is to maintain the vehicle as well as what's the resale value in the market. So there may be a situation whereby we purchase a 2019 F-150 and then we get to drive this vehicle for a year and they say, Jonathan, you purchased it for $20,000. The resale market for this vehicle is $23,000. So they take that vehicle, they sell that vehicle, replace it with another comparable vehicle, and you benefit from the savings of that. So they're always constantly watching the market and making sure that your fleet is up to date, that there is actual data as to why we're making the decisions. And we get out of a situation whereby we don't have vehicles that were purchased in the late 80s and early 90s that realistically we have a hard time finding parts to keep these vehicles in stock or, you know, running on the road. So there is a lot of elements and a lot of data and a lot of analytics that's associated with this arrangement. So when we're looking at things, there's a bunch of factors that are considered. And I think it gives us a very good way to manage our fleet. And down to the GPS, it's not necessarily just where our vehicles are going, how long they're idling, those types of things, how much wear and tear are we seeing? And so there's a lot of real-time data that helps in making those decisions in the future when we look to acquire a new apparatus, et cetera.
Yep. Jonathan brought up a really good point there, which is there are going to be instances where we find an opportunity in the market to sell a vehicle for more than what it was, what it was originally paid for. When we put together forecasting models like we've provided in the fleet synopsis that you have before you, those forecasting models do not take into account those unique situations. We're estimating normal resale market conditions. We're not anticipating that we sell a vehicle for more than what it was originally purchased for. However, however, we have provided proof of evidence to show that we in fact do deliver those results when the market conditions allow for it. So I think that overall you'll find that the model we've provided is conservative to account for the finance, financial impact. Once we get to the implementation process, we do anticipate to exceed those results.
Okay, so this, the year one analysis that you've given us answers that, I mean, that's really a true thing of what's going to happen in year one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The only variation to that would be if a specific piece of equipment were to be added to a vehicle or a different option were selected on a vehicle, those would change the vehicle pricings.
Okay.
I guess it's important to note, while that's being said, that your agreement by leveraging the procurement process that's been put in place with Sourcewell, that doesn't change profit margins or anything like that. It's just the vehicle cost is what the vehicle cost is. Thank you.
Thanks. I have a question. Would it be better, wouldn't it be better to budget the vehicles within the departments rather, so we know what is costing each department?
That's where the money's coming from. It's coming from the department into the CIP.
Oh, it's a transfer. Okay.
Did you mean within the CIP? It mentions what fund the vehicle is now.
And I said department?
If you, but you raised a good point. In the CIP, I've wanted to put a column there, you know, if it's general fund, what department is it? So we'll try to do that during the next budget process. Because sometimes when you put general fund, well, what departments are coming from?
Yeah.
You know, in some of the descriptions on the line items, we've been putting, well, in parentheses, rec or, you know, whatever department, it might Public Works, whatever. But we'll try to put a column in there to, to see what the department is. That's a good point.
Thanks.
Well, just for people watching, there will be no public comment, I don't believe, because there's no public here going forward. So is there any more discussion on this item? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the Enterprise Fleet Management Plan and Rental Agreement.
Second. Will City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Next, we have the acceptance of proposals for professional consulting, engineering, and design services.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, the city has ongoing contracts for two and three-year periods with various professional groups. You see quite a bit of the engineers that we have working with us for the stormwater and our road and also supportive development review and planning. But it was time for us to go back out for those contracts. So we did advertise, put out a request for qualifications, not a request for proposable just for qualifications. And at this point, we have received, we only received two qualifications and we're very fortunate, they were from the consultants we are already working with so that they can continue in the work that they're providing us. That was Duel and Associates and CPWG. The staff advertised an opening and went through the qualification statements thoroughly and found that they met all of the credentials and requirements put out in the RFQ. And so we're recommending that the, the Commission accept these proposals and that we will then proceed to negotiate contracts and bring those back to you at your next meeting.
Okay, then do we have a motion?
I make the motion that we accept the engineering service RFQ proposals as submitted by Duel and Associates and Crew, Phil, Doc, Weaver, Group, and...
I second.
For the, for the...
Engineering services.
For engineering services.
I second. Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next, we have the award of the bid and approval of contract with Right Away Contracting LLC for 137th Avenue Circle Drainage Improvements Project, contract number 2016-153, and approval to include a 15% to bid amount submitted, dash Cooperative Funding Project with Swiftmont.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to have Al Carrier present this item to the Board.
Good evening. Al Carrier with Duel and Associates. One correction on the reading of the agenda item, it's to Steve's Escavating, not Right Away Contracting. That was a scrupulous error that I believe got corrected earlier last week.
It was Steve's?
So the project tonight that I'm going to be describing... So the project tonight that I'm going to be describing is 137th Avenue Circle Roadway and Drainage Improvements Project. The project limits includes all of 137th Avenue Circle, Salem Street, and Plymouth Street. The purpose of the project is to reconstruct the roadway and improve the collection system on 137th Avenue. It's also to provide water quality treatment through the use of pervious pavement. This was a cooperatively funded project through Swift Mud. It was originally scoped and applied for the funding back in spring of 2016. And at that time, we had to come up with a price, probable price for construction. And at that time, it was about $935,000. Since then, we had a couple of delays, but the bids were opened back up, opened in April of this past year. Steve's Escavating was the lowest bid. If you remember, I was before you in the summer to get you guys to approve, tentatively approve the contract for the increased price over what was originally in the cooperative agreement. I had to go back before the governing board at Swift Mud for the increased price. Steve's was the lowest bidder and in April, the price came back at $1,137,000. Excuse me, $1,137,905. That was approved by the district back in August. Since then, Steve's has had, as other contractors, an increase in pricing materials. The tariffs that were passed, price of concrete has gone up, price of insurance has gone up. He has requested back in September that he be allowed an additional 15% to the overall construction cost. That would put his bid at $1,308,591. Now, keep in mind, it's consistent from what we've been seeing in the industry, but it's also still, at the 15% increase, $200,000 less than the second bid we received back in April. So I'm before you tonight to ask for approval of this agenda item to award to Steve's Escavating for the construction of 137th Avenue Circle.
Madam Mayor, if I may add on to the presentation as well, it's also important to note that in both the projects that you would be hearing of this evening, there is already a 10% contingency that's built into that. So what our recommendation is, of course, obviously eating into that contingency to absorb the cost. And then, so if we're able to manage the project appropriately, we may only see that 5% increase associated with this particular project. But in my conversations with the engineer, we've seen some challenges that have risen from some of the things that have occurred in DC and the local construction market and being able to get commodities and goods and those types of things that have resulted in the increases that we're experiencing. So time is of the essence and the faster we can get shovels in the ground, the more we stand to benefit from cost savings associated with this project. So it is critically important that we move forward accordingly.
As far as the budget is concerned, there is a little over $700,000 that's going to roll forward in stormwater improvement and in stormwater repair, an additional $348,000. We budgeted an allocation, additional allocation in this line item and the 2019 budget of $285,000. So with those three figures, it's going to be able, it's 1.4 million, should be able to cover this. There will be a difference of only $93,000, so it's going to be tight if something else happens, you know, we'll have to make you aware of it from a budget standpoint.
I might add that if you remember on Bogasiega Ave, Bogasiega Drive, we ran into some issues with Pinellas County Water. And at the end of the project, we, Pinellas County ended up giving the city about $400,000 worth of water distribution system improvements in that area. We reached out to Pinellas County. They suspect about half of the water pipe's been replaced. They don't know for certain, but I would suspect that once we get under construction, there's going to be some water pipe that's going to need to be replaced. We are in contact with Pinellas County and we expect them to pay for that again also.
Al, because it was, I'm sure I'll never understand this completely, but because it was Swift Mud's holdup, is that correct? I mean, they were the ones you had to submit additional information to them?
Correct.
Okay. Then was it additional information that we knew in the beginning we were going to have to submit or no? They just apprised us of it at the last minute and I'm thinking that it, that probably was.
Because when we opened the bids in April, it came in a difference between $935,000 and the 1.1 million. The governing board wanted to hear it again. They wanted it to be presented before them to see. Because the cooperative funding, the way it's ranked is based on the amount of removal of nutrients. It's based on pounds per dollar, essentially is what it boils down to. So we were exceeding their allowable amount of removal. So Swift Mud said, we'll let you go ahead and move forward with the project, but we're not going to, we're going to stick with our $465,000 or $467,000 of cooperative funding. You can spend, Madeira Beach, you can spend the extra dollars if you want to get this project done. But Swift Mud, they were at their maximum allowable for the cooperative funding.
That was what I was going to ask you. Is there any way that they can, or have you ever seen any way that then they would throw it, that they would put in more money? Because effectually, it was them that held up the beginning of the project.
There's two ways of looking at it. One is the, because we had to delay the project, the costs went up.
Right.
Because we had to kind of piggyback off of Bogasiega and then REC Place. We had to make sure we got those two projects done before we could move forward. So that caused us a little bit of a delay, about six or eight months. Secondly, we did go ask, City Manager Evans had asked his cohorts over at Swift Mud, repeatedly. We asked too. We have a contact, Nancy Norton, who is working for us. She's at Swift Mud. She is our liaison with Swift Mud. And she exhausted every effort to try and get us some additional funding, but we were unsuccessful.
And to that point, Madam Mayor, we did ask, we asked numerous times, we even pleaded. And unfortunately, one of the elements associated with the project is how the engineer stated it's the amount of nutrients that we treat and how many acres that we treat. Well, the analysis that was first proffered, the number changed and we are actually not treating as much as previously communicated. But Swift Mud, instead of moving the money, they decided to say they would still commit the $460,000 to the city where they effectively had every right to say, okay, you're not treating as much as you would have, so we're going to reduce the amount. They decided to live with the amount that they had offered to us. And since it's such a competitive process and when you are, as a community, when you submit those projects, they anticipate, they want those projects to move forward quickly and they've been very gracious to allow for us to have a little bit of delay because of some of the other things. So unfortunately, we weren't able to get additional monies from them, but they have committed to the amount that they previously have provided to us, even though the project and the amount of acreage that we're treating is not the same.
So when do we actually see this project provided, we proof this and everything, when do we finally see this project going into...
Probably the second week of January, first or second week of January.
Sorry, thank you. Second week in January, okay.
It's got a timeline of 270 days.
Yeah, a year, okay. Or less than a year, okay.
I might add too, and I mentioned this previously, if you were just to do that project and not put in the pervious concrete, just put down regular asphalt pavement that's out there now, we would save about $52,000 in the project cost. But we need the pervious pavement to get the removal of the nutrients. And that's what's triggering the Swift Mud cooperative funding. So for a $52,000 savings, we would lose the $467,000 in cooperative funding.
Seems fair.
So it's just a different way of looking at it.
You did address, I'm sure before, but I don't totally remember it, but you did address, I remember one time I asked you about the pavement, since it's such a large area of the church by the sea. But I think that you had indicated one's got nothing to do with the other. I mean, that what comes off there, huge amount of pavement has nothing, is not going to affect how we're trying to improve the thing with the pervious.
Because the church by the sea and that whole entrance gets so much traffic, we didn't feel comfortable putting the pervious pavement in that section. It would be, it would be a maintenance issue, in my opinion, because there's so much pavement running on to the, which would be the pervious pavement. So in those areas, we put in baffle boxes, so we're going to be collecting like large debris and sand in baffle boxes prior to discharge.
Okay. Thank you. We don't do it now, the $1,308,991 is going to be $2,308,000.
Absolutely.
Any more questions? Thank you, Al. Any more discussion on the board? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the 137th Avenue Circle Roadway Improvements Project.
I second it. Will City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Blak?
Yes.
Next, we have capital improvement, undergrounding of utilities, Phase Two, approval to award an additional 15% to the proposal submitted, which amounts to $1,400,000.
And Madam Mayor and Commissioners, I don't see Steve Tartt here from CPWG. We did tell him that it was, the meeting was rescheduled to Monday, but this, this item, just like the one above that was just approved, has got some time constraints to it and we've seen some increased costs. In the agenda packet that I provided, I gave you the original agreement when we first started the undergrounding of utilities project back in April 8th in 2014. And then Steve Tartt, CPWG, came to the board in August of 2017 and indicated that they were ready to proceed with Phase Two, which was basically from south of 150th to approximately 144th Ave and then not to exceed $1,050,000. And we went ahead with that purchase order. And during the Budget Committee meeting on April 10th, I did indicate, or I'm sorry, the, on April 10th, the CPWG and Steve indicated that, the indications were that they would go ahead with issuing permits for the job. And also on May 15th at a budget workshop, we provided clarity on the numbers of what we were dealing with as far as getting reimbursement from the penny for Pinellas and how that money over the years has accumulated. Right now, what we're looking at, and I verified this today with the county, and there is a little bit of a change. I know I've got $1,427,800, but that number just, has changed just a slight little bit. It's $1,427,2609, just so we're daring with an accurate figure here. And this is the money that we have to spend, we have to go forward on this project to get reimbursed this amount of money. And we have till September 30th of 2019 to complete the project and get reimbursed for this, for this sum. Now, September and October timeframe due to increased construction costs, just like the previous agenda item that you've seen, we're now seeing that due to maybe some difficulties with Duke Energy and a subcontractor maybe causing some of the delay, that the cost is now at 1.4 million, which is an increase of $350,000. And one of the bone of contention's of getting this project started or off the ground was that Duke Energy needed to be paid $490,000 for the construction to start. We've already issued that payment. We issued it two weeks ago. It has not cleared the bank yet, but we have a comfort level that they have received that. So basically, the fiscal impact is an additional $350,000. We are under a time constraint to get this project done to, to avoid getting, or getting the reimbursement. And there's really a caution here that was stressed to me even today by the county that the deadline is in September. So we are under a time crunch to get this done.
My only concern, and I believe City Manager told me that we'd be fine, but I just want to clear it with you as well, that this does not interfere with the Big C or the Barry Islands Government Council's resolution to do the rest of the undergrounding as one project and share the costs. Is that correct?
This is our project. This is the money that we, this 1.4 million is what we have to complete this project. And again, I verified this number again. I wanted to be very specific of the number, even though it differs a little, a couple of dollars. I just want to be specific about this. And this is the funds that we have available through to the end of September of 2019 to finish this project. You know, as the project proceeds, we will reimburse, we will submit for reimbursement from the county up to including that number.
Madam Mayor, to your question, the discussion that occurred at the Big C with respect to the penny for Pinellas and the continued undergrounding on Gulf Boulevard is looking at the next penny phase. And in the next penny phase, they are looking to have all the cities effectively allow for the county to manage it, to work with one contractor and they be the entity that moves through these communities to effectively complete this project, as you are well aware that they've been discussing this, I think, for well over two decades now. And they're seeing different cities doing it at different times. So the next phase of the penny, so we could see after this allotment is done, we can anticipate the county moving forward with a larger project to effectively accomplish the undergrounding of Gulf Boulevard.
All right. I just want to make sure that it didn't interfere with the county and we can go forward. Okay. Any more discussion? I was going to ask one question with City Manager. What can, what can we do, or is there anything we can do to make sure that when we're online, I mean, if we've got to make sure that this is done by September 2019, well, you could almost say, oh yeah, well, it will be. But it never is that way. You know, it's always back a couple of months, a couple of months. So how do we know that when we're placed in line to get that project started, that we really are going to be placed in line? I mean...
It's a good question. It's a good question because actually I was under the impression this thing would be done by now.
I was too.
Well, and one of the things that the contract manager, had you been here, would have communicated to you is that CPWG is the firm that is working pretty much with most communities doing the undergrounding here for this particular phase. So they're very connected as far as the entities that would be actually doing the work. So I can anticipate that we will be able to complete the work, but what I will do is I will personally make a phone call to Mr. Tartt tomorrow and then I will set up an opportunity whereby he comes and briefs the board at probably our next meeting to outline a project timeline so you can see and then we can talk about what happens in the event if. I know the county has some flexibility that we will be able to benefit from. However, we want to get it completed on time and within the budget that we're asking the board to approve. So I can reach out to Mr. Tartt and make sure that he's here because Director Pierce and I weren't under the impression he was going to be here this evening to answer those specific questions to it.
Okay. Because I'm really, I'm concerned about that, only because I know September 19th, September 2019 will be...
19th, September 2019 will be along. And if somebody, I mean, I thought we were going to be finished way before Treasure Island. That was the, that was the, that was the way it was supposed to be, okay? So I, I don't know what happened, but yes, that would be great if.
So the purpose is tonight, with the Board's approval, we will add to or increase that original purchase order?
Well, it has to be done.
I make a motion that we approve capital improvement undergrounding of utilities, Phase Two.
I second the motion.
Will City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Onto new business. Ordinance 2018-13, the fiscal year 2018 budget amendment, number two, first reading, Director Pierce.
The Clerk will read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance 2018-13, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners for the City of Madera Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year 2018, beginning October 1, 2017, through September 30, 2018, by increasing the general fund and debt service fund appropriations and expenditures, and providing for an effective date.
And Madam Mayor and Commissioners, the intent of this ordinance is to increase the budget for various general fund department accounts, whose actual expenditures for FY 2018 exceeded the budget. Per state statute, which is in the ordinance, 166.241, no department expenditures can exceed the budget, and that's why we're doing this right here. Did this similar to this time last year also. It's a little bit of cleanup and comparing the, the budget amendments to make the departments whole and make so their budget is over the expenditure. The real impacts here is general fund and the debt service fund. And just so you recall, on the Series 2014 debt for undergrounding utilities along Gulf Boulevard, the city was looking for, looking at a significant payment in the amount of 1,261,000 on November 1st. And at the recommendation of staff and our financial advisor, we actually refunded this debt, which is now Series 2018. The amount of this debt that's been refunded is $1,297,000. Basically, we did this, again, to give us a little bit more time. It coincides with the previous agenda item and the money and the reimbursement that we get for the undergrounding utilities. So in Exhibit A, which is attached, the first, the first entry basically is to increase the general fund budget revenues for receiving the refunded revenue, the new bond Series 2018, which was refunded by our Seaside Bank, which totals $1,297,000. So that's increasing the revenues on the revenue side. The next entry is basically establishing the general fund budget expenditures for the COI, which is the cost of issuance. That's for the attorneys, like Ralph, who, who had their expertise, who read the documents and provided their opinions, and the preparation of the materials and the docs. And that was $32,754. And the transfer to actually cover the payment of the actual debt, or the previous debt, was $1,263,154. And then the last entry, so there's three entries that apply to this refunding. Then the last entry is the entry that impacts the debt service fund, which is the last entry on that page, where we're actually paying out the $1,261,000 and the interest that went with that, the small interest that was accrued for that period of time of 20154. So that total for the debt service and a budget, to amend the budget, is $1,263,154. The offset credit, the $1,263,154, actually increases the debt revenue, which is the offset. The middle entry there, the large one, is cleanup that we did to, again, where departments, where their expenditures exceeded budget. Hate to say this, but the first, the first four lines are finance. We had an, an overage in the budget as far as salaries and wages of $3,500, which basically ties to where Patrick Cady was actually the acting director of finance before I got here. And in putting the budget in for this particular year, we didn't allocate enough to compensate for the increase in his, his, his final wage. The physicals, we had additional employees that we hired, which came out of finance, that's $3,400. We had our auditor do a special grant audit, which was a requirement based because we had exceeded the threshold in a dollar amount of grants that we received. That was $33,600. We had additional budget documents that were produced that, that cost $5,600. Part of this was providing information to the Budget Committee and an additional documentation for the Board that we did on budget workshops. The next eight entries are cleanup for the non-departmental budget, which is basically the budget where if, if the budget or expenditure doesn't fit any particular departments, it gets stuck in non-departmental. This is my favorite budget by department, and I'm only kidding. The computer support, which is, we're increasing that by $20,000. That is due to the cybersecurity additional contract that we signed. The website, we're asking to increase the budget by $16,100 for additional website enhancements that are, that are being taken on. We also had an increase in $4,300 on other contractual services like cleaning. The electric went up, and we're, we're increasing that by $3,300. The insurance also went up as well, which we don't, we don't expect to see next year. Some of this deals with some, some of the worker comp claims that existed in the past, and we're recommending that it increased $11,500. The next item, a maintenance of building, and this is a large one, $52,900, which we're recommending be increased. This is basically due to Hurricane Irma and the maintenance and repairs that we had to spend, basically around this whole complex to, as a result of, of the hurricane. And fireworks, we had to get additional bards to accommodate that, that's $11,400. Office supplies, that increased $7,300. And we had a small increase in the law enforcement budget, $500. There was also a budget correction here, the cost of the new parking machines. Really, we had budgeted that in the local option sales tax fund, and really, it should have been paid out of the general fund and parking. The money that's allocated in the local option sales tax, where we didn't purchase that, would just roll over into that balance, so there would still be money available within that fund. So that budget correction for the machines was $119,000. And by the way, I want to say that, again, Chris Tarkington did a great job when he assisted in purchasing those machines. We got a rebate on the exist, on the existing machines that exceeded $25,000, which helped in the purchase price of, of these machines. So the cleanup total for the general fund is $262,400. So the real budget impact is that $262,000 that I just mentioned. Now, you're probably saying, well, what, what, what does the fund balance look like? We're still too early to determine what the fund balance will look like for FY 2018. We'll probably have a good idea by the end of January of what those numbers are when we start to really go into detail with the auditor. I will say this, there are some departments that did very, very well on the budget last year, as far as budget exceeding expenditures. And one of those departments was the fire department, which the budget exceeded the expenditures by $110,000. The rec center is another one, where their budget exceeded expenditures by $131,000. So both those departments did very, very well. And there were some other departments that did well as well, Public Works, City, City Manager's Office. So while I'm giving you some of the glory, gory details of where we do, have to do a budget amendment here, there are other departments that did very well that would help some of the, the figures that I, that I mentioned to you and help offset that in the overall calculation of the fund balance. Any questions at all?
So your budget amendment, this budget amendment, is the total of $262,000?
Yeah, basically, basically, the, the budget entries for the, the refunding of the debt, basically, those entries wash each other out. So the real impact on the budget here is general fund and that middle entry of $262,000, which really, when you're looking at the scheme of things and you're dealing with a, a large budget, is not, is not a bad, bad thing. Continue, you know, and also taking in consideration that we had an adjustment there for the parking machines.
Right. Yeah, that's an amount.
And it's not, and it's not like that money is gone. Like I said, that allocation in the lost fund or the local option sales tax fund will roll over into that balance, and, and will be available for other type of purchases going forward.
Any discussion from the board? Just cleanup. All right. Are we having a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to, I move to accept ordinance 2018-13, amending budget for the fiscal year 2018 in the amount of, or the budget amendment being in the amount of $262,400.
Well, I think the...
Is that correct?
I think the motion should...
Your motion to approve.
Approve, sorry. Okay. Motion to approve.
The motion should approve, basically, the title of the ordinance. Yes.
Okay, then I make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-13, amending the budget for the fiscal year 2018 on first reading.
Okay. Second. Will City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next, we have resolution 2018, amending the fiscal year 2018 budget by decreasing capital outlay expenditures, and amending fiscal year 2019 budget by increasing capital outlay expenditures. Director Pierce?
And, well, first of all, does Clerk want to read the, the title of the resolution?
Resolution 2018-18, a resolution of the City of Madera Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2018 budget by decreasing capital outlay expenditures, amending the fiscal year 2019 budget by increasing capital outlay expenditures, and providing for an effective date.
And Mayor and Commissioners, the intent of this resolution is to maintain the funding for various capital projects. Two of them we talked about tonight, the undergrounding utilities and the stormwater project 137th, which, which are impacted by this resolution. The purpose of this is to bring forward the balances that are impacted by those type of projects and remove them from fiscal year 2018 budget and reappropriate them to fiscal year 2019 budget. This is basically a timing issue, basically because when we close out our books, I know it takes a long time, it takes longer than I thought, but typically, it's the end of March, and at that time, balances due and purchase orders roll over. Well, because these projects are ongoing, we're actually asking, and this is, this is a routine that we've done the city in the past, is that these balances roll over now, so that these projects can get started now, and that the funds are avail, the balances in those funds are carried forward and reappropriated to, to cover those projects. And at the October 23rd Board of Commissioners workshop, we received a consensus from the Board that, of the list provided, that basically, that basically six, I think we had nine initially, that, that six projects be carried over, and the balances. In Exhibit A, the first one is the city center, and that balance is $78,270.27. Gulf Boulevard improvements is $178,823.74. The reason, that balance may seem low, because we already have purchase orders set up for the undergrounding. We're going to increase one of those, which is the initial $1,050,000 that we just talked about for the undergrounding. We'll be increasing that. But this 178 is basically a contingency amount that came along with the, the repaving project from the DOT, or FDOT, which is $1.9 million. The seawall improvement is $14,828.5. The storage facility design is $240,000. Stormwater rehabilitation and repair is $348,520.70. And the stormwater drainage and roadway repair improvements is $768,848.50. Those two, last two amounts, and the stormwater, is going to help go toward the 137th project. So again, the passage of this resolution basically transfers the capital project balances into FY 2019 to ensure that there are no overages and has no impact on fund balance. This is consistent, again, with year-end practices that the finance department has done in previous years. And I get, those are two, the fiscal impact is basically what the city manager advised me to put in there, just so that it was some clarity.
Any discussion from the board? We have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2018-18, amending the fiscal year 2018 and fiscal year 2019 budgets for ongoing capital outlay projects.
Second. Will City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I just want to indicate one more time, the budget amendment that we did, the item before this one, that's, this is the first reading. The second reading will be on the 27th of this month at that special meeting for approval.
Now, we're on to the appointments of the Civil Service Commission. City Clerk?
Yes. Currently, there is one vacancy on the Civil Service Commission. A second basic vacancy will occur once a personnel policy review project and, and employee grievance hearing has been completed. Chairman Pam Ramison did not wish to be considered for reappointment. She's been on there a long time. The Board of Commissioners is asked to appoint two applicants to serve on the Civil Service Commission, one to begin serving immediately for a term expiring on July 15, 2020, and the other to begin serving once a personnel policy review and the employee grievance hearing has been completed for a term expiring July 15, 2021. The reason for the 2021 to be chosen next is that's Pam's expiring term, if she should to reapply. There were three applications received before the advertisement, and I advertised twice, and I did not get a response, so Reese Norin, Linda C. Hine, and Stephen Michael. So Reese Norin, Linda Sehane, and Stephen Michael Cavallaro are the three applicants to choose from. And then when you appoint, state which one it's for, for the 2020 or the 2021.
I would recommend that we only appoint one right now and wait until the other one comes up and appoint it then. We may get other applicants in the meantime.
But there's a vacancy now.
Well, we will appoint one now.
Right. There's only one vacancy at this point.
Okay. Well, I don't understand it, because it says term expiring July 15, 2018.
One's expiring, one's expiring July 15, 2020.
Yeah, but one's already expired.
Correct, but they're in the middle of two projects.
Yes, she's just staying in. That's the need to do two.
No, we need to do one right now.
There's only one expired.
No, there's one vacancy right now, and that's the one we need to do right now.
And unless we appoint two, then there's the possibility always of a tie, the tie broken. That's why I-
Daddy, turn the mic on if you're going to talk.
I thought my voice is loud enough anyway. But, okay, and I guess my thinking was is that if we appoint two now, okay, you'll have filled the vacancy that's, well, the term that's already expired whereby she's just serving until we find someone, right?
Until the two projects are complete.
And then, so that there's not just four on the committee. Okay, that's the reason that I was thinking of five, that I, that was my-
Madam mayor, if I may, and the city attorney probably should opine on this, I think if you were to appoint two members, the individual in the expired term, even though that they have communicated that they're not willing, if you appoint two members, that individual would assume that seat immediately despite that person's desire to complete the projects, if I'm not mistaken. Because their term is expired, they have communicated that they're not willing to seek reappointment. So if you appoint two people, those two people sit on the board immediately, and that person vacates. So to the mayor's point, if you appoint one person, then they fill that vacancy, and then when that project or whatever that time is when that person wants to transition off the board, at that point, you can consider. But if you make two, if you appoint two people this evening, that person's time on the board is over effective tonight with the board, with the adoption of the-
You have one-
We need to appoint the one for the vacancy.
You have one expired term, and you have one vacant term.
Right.
So I recommend that you appoint two people, one to fill the vacant term and one to fill the expired. The expired one is like a vacant term. It's, the person's serving until you appoint somebody, and they've chosen not to reapply. And you have two applicants, and you have two vacancies.
But if they make that appointment this evening, that person's time, that's serving that vacant term, is done this evening.
That's correct. They're expired. A new person would take over.
But the good, the positive part of that is the three that are serving right now, okay, that are on there are not new. They're kind of seasoned civil service members. So the point being that they would be able to just continue on the-
That's why you have rotating terms.
Right. Yeah. Okay.
So is that to you what you want to do?
Actually, you have three applications. I said two. You have three applications for two seats.
Did you want us to write it on this and then turn the paper into you, or how did you want it?
You should make a motion and a second, and then you should do it again for the second person. You have to comply with sunshine law, so you got a voice vote.
Vocally.
So motion and a second for the one spot, and when that's done, a motion and a second for the second spot. If you decide not to fill a seat, that certainly, you are a prerogative, you can make a motion not to fill a seat.
But you're saying as soon as we appoint these two people, they will both go on to the commission?
You should make a motion and a second for the first seat. There's a second vacancy, make a motion and a second for the second seat.
I make a motion to appoint Linda Heine to the vacancy.
To the vacancy regular, vacancy at the bottom?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I'd like to amend the motion.
For what?
I would like to amend Nancy's motion to appoint Linda Heine to fill the vacancy for the term expiring July 15, 2020, and appoint Stephen Cavallaro to fill the vacancy for the term that's already expired on July 15, 2018.
So I think what would happen-
You could do that if you want to, if you can, if the person who made the motion agrees. My thought was you were to do these two things separate, but you could do them together. I don't think there's anything that prohibits you from doing them together.
Well, I'll go with your way. I'm just saying, I looked at the applications, and I was, I guess I was impressed at the fact that the appointments that were completed by Linda Heine and completed by Stephen Cavallaro, both at the very bottom indicated the real willingness to serve as a member, you know, of that board, to give back to their community of Madera Beach. And the other candidate did not indicate why he wanted to be on it. So that's why I like the two. So it, I'll go along with yours, and then I'll make a motion. Is that satisfactory, city attorney?
You could do it either way.
All right. Well, then, I'll second the motion to apply, I'll make the motion to approve Linda Heine for the vacancy for the term expiring July 15, 2020.
Well, whose motion's on the floor? I made one to start with.
Well, your motion is on the floor.
I made a motion to-
Just for one person for that last seat, and then there's a second now. So now they can call a question or call the roll.
I make a motion to appoint Linda Heine for the vacancy regular, term expiring on July 15, 2020.
And I second the motion.
Okay. Is there any discussion? If not, then you can take the call.
Any discussion? Will city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
No.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Okay. For the second vacancy, we all know what's going on on the Civil Service Board, correct? Pam Rasmussen, from what I've heard, is going to stay on until that whole process or whatever is going to happen is happening. To bring somebody new on and try to get that person up to speed on all the things that have happened throughout that whole process that the Civil Service Board's going through is going to be a nightmare for probably anybody. So my suggestion is to not even worry about filling her place until that whole process is done and over with.
I think that's a good idea.
Well, I guess my question would be, is if her term did, has expired, and I guess I would have to, I guess I'd have to ask her, you know, is then why, why did she want to continue until we found someone else? I mean, what was the, what was the motive?
My involvement with the Civil Service Board has been limited. The city clerk can provide probably a little bit more insight, but from what I've heard is that they effectively, or that the chair effectively would like to complete the review of the personnel manual and the item that is before them concerning an employment issue before vacating the seat. So that is the two items that that particular individual would like to dispel of prior to stepping down from their seat on the board.
Well, how is that person legally still on the board if their term expired? Maybe they should be reappointed.
Right.
Claire, how did that occur? Where, how did that person remain on the commission?
I think they can continue until we get somebody on. We didn't have any applications for one, and they've been working all summer. Their project started before the term expired.
I just don't understand how they're legally continuing in the role unless they've been reappointed after their expiration.
Can we, can we reappoint her until these two projects are completed?
Well, no, because, well, I can't imagine why, because she said she didn't want to be reappointed.
Yeah, I think, I need to appoint people or reappoint people without their permission because, you know.
Well, then, I think we need to wait and get, and ask her where she wants to go.
Table the second seat until the next meeting?
Yes, I would probably think that would be a good idea. Then whose responsibility is it to, would it be the city clerk to contact the current chairperson to determine, yeah, if she would be reappointed or not? And then we can make that decision.
Sure. Okay. Move on. When she's done, she can resign, and then that, she can be filled at that point.
Right.
But if a term expires, you really should get reappointed to fill that seat officially.
Even if they're in the middle of a process that's being worked on now?
Then they should say, I wish to reapply and get reappointed, and that's one good public policy reason to keep them on. But I guess the Civil Service Commission was dormant for quite a while, so I'm not sure that all the procedures were followed. But normally, you should reapply before your seat expires, along with everybody else, and then get reappointed. You could serve on those boards, there's no term limits, so you can have as many times as you want on the board, but you should never be serving when your seat is, when your term is already expired.
Right. Without any reappointment. Okay, so what do we do? We're just going to wait?
I think we're going to table till next week or till next month, and we're going to ask the existing chair if she would like to be reappointed, and then she can serve out that portion of the term to finish whatever projects she wants to finish, and she can resign at that point. That would open up the seat, and someone else could get reappointed to that seat.
So are we just appointing one person?
We can give a courtesy to the chairman to see if she would like to reapply and reappoint. She may not have understood what was happening.
Okay. And also, is it possible then, or would it be good service for city clerk to notify the other two applicants that this position has been filled tonight, but yet will be carrying it through with regards to that other vacancy on the next meeting?
Yes.
So that they know that we're still interested?
Yes, and they may want to come and talk to you.
Yeah, I'm going to communicate.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I believe we have a motion?
We already did it.
Oh, we did it. Okay. Will city clerk, oh, we're all done then?
We're done.
Okay. All right. We're on to staff reports. Any staff reports?
Madam mayor, just wanted to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving, and that concludes my report.
That's a wonderful report.
That's a good one.
And any reports of correspondence from the commission?
I have a couple of things I was wondering about. When are we going to see a schedule for the street sweeper? And when is it ever even going to be seen? I've seen it one time since we've gotten it.
I will get that to you tomorrow.
I would appreciate that. It was supposed to go out on the web page, so, on the website. And the other thing I've been looking for is the survey overlays, or John's pass.
We will get that. I believe there was an overlay on the black and white, but I will get with Mr. Carrier, and we'll get that fixed.
I would appreciate that.
And that's to determine what we originally asked for is placed on there, right?
It's just, it's showing the property lines of everybody, the property owners in John's pass, and who owns what, and where does it go to? Because when you look at just a black and white-
I know, I've looked at it.
I mean, I looked at it too, and it's not a real clear picture for me.
I don't understa, I mean, I know, all I can tell is where the planters are and stuff like that, but it does not define the city property versus the property owner.
Exactly. That's why I want to see that.
Okay. Right. Cool.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
My pleasure.
Any other reports from the commission? City attorney?
Not at this time, thank you.
City manager?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. And city clerk?
I do. Thank you. Monday, December the 3rd, at 6:00 PM, the Charter Review Committee will be doing a, hosting a charter amendment citizen forum right here in the chamber. So everybody is welcome. We'll be putting out packets on what the upcoming proposed charter amendments are, and based on that conversation, based on the feedback that they get on December the 3rd, they're going to present amendments to the commission, and the BOC will workshop those on Thursday, December the 6th, at 6:00 PM. And then based on that, first reading of an ordinance placing the charter amendments on the March the 12th, 2019 ballot, will go on the December 11th BOC regular meeting. And then, well, in between first reading and second reading, there will be a couple of forums and, you know, continue. We're going to give lots of notice and many times for the public to ask questions and all the way up to election day, before election.
Anything else? That's it? Okay.
Yeah.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:35.